All right. Calling the zoning commission regular meeting to order on the third of October two thousand twenty four at seven o'clock. This meeting is being recorded for transcription purposes and the written minutes and attachments, if any, will serve as the official recording of record of this meeting. On behalf of our virtual audience, we ask the public joining us in person to approach the podium in the event that they would like to speak. You'll need to announce their name and address prior to speaking. Additionally, we ask the audience to save personal conversation for after the meeting as additional voices can cause confusion for those attending virtually. Roll call, Marzullo here.
Here.
Fisher.
Here.
Manley.
Here.
Kalas.
Here.
Alternate Long.
Here.
Dan alternate Mandalakis has an excused absence. Trustee Engelman is in the audience and trustee Sweattick is attending virtually. All right, so to start with, we'll be looking at the regular meeting minutes from our September fifth meeting. Has everybody had a chance to review them? And has anyone seen or noted any changes? If there are no changes necessary, I'd entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes as written.
So moved.
Moved by Manley.
Second.
Second by Kalas. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, passes unanimously. And sees down for signature. All right, and so old business, it is not on the agenda, but it was brought up in an email that there was some question about the final site plan for the estates at Prairie Vista. I'm sure we all recall at the last commission meeting, we approved the final site plan with three addendums. One of them was that there was not enough. There was not enough frontage along the road for sub lot eleven. And so they had to go back and reparse out the land. Now, they went to Medina County Planning Commission, it was replanted and approved by the by Medina County Planning. And then it went to the trustees to be to be approved for the 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 actual construction to begin. One of the questions that was brought up was, all right, can we do this? Can or did it have to come before the zoning commission again? Because there was a change. And the change was, I apologize, I don't have it digitally, but sub blocks ten, eleven, and twelve, or ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen on the cul-de-sac were all replanted. And they were adjusted slightly to make sure that it it met with the frontage required requirements along the private road. The the original question that was brought up is is this considered substantial change that now needs to have another site plan review? Because we didn't have another meeting, we didn't do another site planner. It was approved and moved on, and I think that ultimately the question is as a commission, and I'm actually really glad this is coming up with the new business that we have because it's something that Marcus and I did talk a little bit about offline and we as a commission have kind of inherited a process that we have continued. When I first came on the commission, we had obviously, actually a completely different commission. And when we were doing preliminary site plan review, we would motion to approve, and if there were there were changes that need where there were necessary, we'd say, you know, motion approved, pending this, that, or the other. And when they met it, then they just went out and started doing started the the plans. Well, we we should not have been doing that. And that's something that has continued all the years that I've been on the commission where we continue to say, all right, well, you know, we'll we'll entertain a motion to approve the final site plan pending you do this, this, or this. And in this case, it ended up being, okay, well, in order to meet with the requirements that we set, we had to replat these four lots. And the question, that begs the question of, all right, well, they changed four lots, does that mean that that this is a substantial change? And do we have to have another site plan?
Why are you referring to substantial change? Our our text doesn't treat, so Medina County Planning Commission, they do have that nuance where if it's a substantial change, it has to come back before the planning commission. If it's an inconsequential or change, it doesn't have to come back before the planning commission. But ours doesn't say that. Our rule actually says that only the zoning commission can decide whether something is insubstantial and therefore the final site plan, the revised final can be waived. So I think that the idea that, you know, it's actually eleven point two C. The township zoning commission may determine that review of a site plan is not required where no changes are proposed for an existing site or where only inconsequential changes as determined by the township zoning commission are proposed. So even if it's inconsequential, it's still the commission's duty to look at it and waive it. And the reason that I flagged this one is because this one was actually a replat of four lots, of which some of them gained a third of an acre and some of them lost a third of an acre. So it to me was pretty significant that they're moving the boundaries on four. I don't recall us ever providing a condition where we allowed them to change the lots on a final site plan. We've allowed them to submit, let's say, we've allowed them to submit for the signage as a condition. We've allowed for verifications as a condition. We've allowed for verifications of legal as a condition. But we've never
Updated landscaping as a condition, stuff like that.
I don't even know that we did that with senior housing, which was the only landscaping plan, they had to come back before us. We told them that we could not review based upon the landscape plan as they initially submitted because they had a fewer number of trees. And so what they did is they resubmitted actually two days before our meeting, and that's when we reviewed the updated landscape. I don't know that we've ever even done a landscape conditional on them coming up with the, you know, revising the plan to show additional trees. We might approve condition on them demonstrating that
They meet, they meet it, yeah.
Because that's just a check, that's either black or it's a white, but not based upon a modification.
Okay, then, I mean, I think at at this point, it's kind of moot, it's already been approved. But if anybody wants to look at the updated changes and if there's anything that you flag and say, hey, there's no reason this should move forward.
I'm just kind of, I like, when I look at this revised thing that you sent, well, that I think Nicole inspector sent to us.
Wasn't sent to everyone?
No, it wasn't. It was sent after after the fact, after the township signed off on it. Inspector Blunk sent it to us. But even under this, I don't see those measurements. So I still don't know how we could verify with the documents that they submitted that that seventy foot lot line has been that. You know, Davies is is has always been pretty reasonable and fair, and I think that they would have accurately measured it and hopefully said, yes, it meets it. But these these documents still do not show those measurements. I mean, they don't even, the the one that has measurement, the any sort of values on it is still not even a circular cul-de-sac. So I I don't know how we would verify from
I mean, it's a circular cul-de-sac, it's just not showing a circular setbacks.
It's not showing the circular arc for the
Yeah, for the for the
For the
Frontage.
Yes. So I still don't know how from these documents we even can verify our requested condition, which was, do you meet the seventy foot setback? Or seventy foot lot width?
And that's that's certainly something we can request from Navy at this point, say, hey, I know you guys, you you guys went through the the time, the expense to get this all replanted. Can you just give us some sort of verification that you're meeting the seventy foot arc of these four lots? Again, at this point, I think there's not much to move to to do with this particular development. But it does, it does shed light on something that we've been doing that from now on, I feel like it's it's essential that anytime a site plan review comes forward is that they submit a one hundred percent complete packet. If you are missing your landscape plan, if you are missing the sign in your landscape plan or or in in the site plan, I'm sorry, we have to deny it. You can come back next month with all the correct documentation. I think that's that's the only way that we can prevent anything from like from this happening again. But more than that is we've been, part of what we've been doing is we've we've been trying to reduce the burden on the residents of Hayley, which is, I mean, which is great. But I think in our in in haste, we may be creating situations like this.
If they're missing documents, the simple solution is to not accept it as a complete application. Because the first step is that the zoning inspector is supposed to review it to confirm that it's a complete application. And so if they're missing items, then just don't accept it as a complete application. That would then trigger, they wouldn't even have to come back before us the first time for a final site plan because we'll have deemed that they're missing items that we need for the site plan. So if they're missing a landscaping plan, if they're missing a sign, you know, if they don't meet the checklist even that we run through as part of it, and just don't accept this.
And I you're you're absolutely right about that. I mean, this is not a a new thing that we're running into. Like I said, this is something that's been ongoing for the last, shoot, it's been over ten years now that I've been on the board of, all right, we get this and then it's, okay, well, we'll submit it. We 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 missed that one. I think to your point, yes, if we don't have a hundred percent solution, then don't bring it before the board. I also recognize that there there may be pardon me, there may be things that get accidentally overlooked. And if it does make it to us without a certain document that we come through and we find, I think the only logical solution for us as a commission then is to say, all right, sorry, we can't accept it as is, we need you to add this, this, and this. Or, you know, you just got this one thing out of place, sorry, we didn't catch it, but we'll see you next month.
We can, that's pretty harsh considering we've accepted as a complete application. I think that there are times where we can do something as a condition and then trust that it's been verified. But there's a difference between, you know, conditioned on a verification of measurement, for instance, and a modification of a site plan.
I don't know that we necessarily can actually accept it unless we have a completed packet that is correct. And that's that's what I'm kind of going back to is this is this is a practice that we've inherited that we have continued to propagate and allow to happen. I think it's just important that in the future, if it's not correct, we don't put okay, well, we just assume you're going to do what we ask you to do. And okay, we'll have the inspector go and check, but what they do may not necessarily, I mean, they may come back the next month with, all right, we did what you asked. And then that leaves a whole bunch of different questions by the five of us.
But don't they normal, I mean, I don't know how it bypassed the commission here. I mean, how did it get through to the Medina? Because normally Suzanne sends
Not through, not to Medina, Medina separate, but it went to the trustees for signature.
Well, first, 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 it went to the to Medina County to sign off on the new plans. So they adjusted the plans. And then it was put in front of the trustees to sign and say, okay, it's good. But now it now matches up.
Who verified that those conditions, there were three conditions, who verified that those were met?
I I
I guess that was the confusion. If it if normally they come back to us and even, you know, just for the modifications, and it's a very quick presentation, they met them and that's it. So I guess just the bypass of this commission is is a concern. How, what happened, where's that loose piece that maybe it needs to be, you know, looked at?
Yeah, and ultimately, I think it was just something that
Because I don't know that
I'll I'll tell you, I, when when we left that meeting, I assumed that something was going to happen that would that it was going to change either the radius of the the cul-de-sac or they're going to, I actually kind of expected to move the lot lines and meet what was necessary. And that's the condition that I thought we had set. So it could be very much my misinterpretation of, all right, this is this is what we're doing.
I have another question.
Yes.
You know, we didn't get these plans until after I saw that they were signed off and I emailed and asked for a copy of the plans. Why didn't we get the plans? They submitted new plans, why weren't those sent to us?
I don't know that we've ever had things sent to us after the fact.
Anything that I received as chair was always forward.
I didn't receive anything until you requested it.
So then how did you know about that 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 they had changed it? I'm because
Because because I talked to the office. And they said, yep, they ended up getting it replatted. Because ultimately the applicant was very displeased that it was caught at the last minute. And then turns out that it was something that was overlooked by their service provider. And so that service provider said, yep, that's on me, I totally missed it. And they went back, replatted it. And then it moved forward.
But the replat and everything that happens on the county level is totally distinct from what happens on the township level.
Correct.
We we are, I mean, you know, we happen to follow kind of synchronously behind them in stages, but we don't have to. It that, you know, that the fact that the county approved it does not sound mean we approve of it. So, okay, it just sounds like unfortunate, you know, what I'm hearing from you, I guess, is that you would like us to either approve or reject a site plan. Not ever approve a modification.
Correct. That's that's my personal feeling on this. And it's actually been my feeling since before this went through, it was something that I'd been kicking around, but it was not something that we'd ever had an issue with.
So is the issue before us right now that we're discussing the issue of rejecting a plan that's not complete? Or is the issue of us not having the person come to the zoning to have a final approval of what they did? I guess I'm confused.
I'm confused by your question.
Yes.
Yeah. So they didn't come before us for a final approval of it, a a final, final approval of what they did.
They should have come before us for a revised final site plan.
Correct. But they did not. And Matt wants to either reject or approve.
Moving forward.
Moving forward.
Yep.
Rather than approve based upon the conditions being met.
Correct.
Okay, so that was my question.
Conditional approvals, which, I mean, frankly, with all of the conditional approvals that we've we've approved in the years, not once did someone come back in front of the commission and say, yes, I verified all of that. Not once. And so this allows us to confirm before we even give it the stamp that, yep, it's up to code. If we start moving forward with only you've got a hundred percent solution or you don't.
Well, I thought even on the senior, I thought we did that. I thought we went through everything that they modified before a final approval was given when they came back.
I don't think that we requested any modifications on the final. What we did on for them, I thought, thought is there was an issue with their street. And it was discovered after the fact, after we approved
Two feet wider or something.
They needed to be two feet wider because the fire department could not make the the turn into the senior housing development. So they added two feet of pavement. And so we required them to come back for a revised site plan specifically because they were adding that two feet of pavement. And that wasn't on the original site plan.
But then the 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 development West one thirty next to the golf course, when they submitted their final site plan, yeah, when they submitted their final site plan, we approved it with a condition on their sign.
Right.
They they didn't have to come back and give us another there was never a presentation of, all right, this is what their sign is going to look like. It was just, all right, zoning inspector, just make sure that it meets and that they they they
Well, and part of that is because a development can happen without a sign and a sign is a separate permit. So the sign goes through a separate permit thing. And on top of that, they're not changing the lots for the placement of the sign. So the idea that we even have to review where a sign is, you know, while we say in our code, hey, we want to have this sign, we have no ability to tell them, no, they can't put this sign here.
If it's in the right of way, we
If it is in the right of way, but then they'll also, that will be stopped at the zoning permit time as well. So there there's that additional permitting process for a
Well, but that's also the whole point of, all right, if you're going to give us a plan with the sign on it, that allows us to prevent them having that hiccup when they actually submit the the sign permit.
It does, but
As well, I mean, one of the things that we were talking with that one was specifically the lighting on that side. And there's nothing in the, there's no permitting or anything, there's there's no verbiage in the in the in the book about, all right, what kind of light you can have on a development site? And they were going to do a post, post lot. And we approved, we just said, oh, yeah, all right, we'll just try to make sure it's not too distracting as people are driving, driving down the street. And that was the conditional we gave them. And frankly, we never heard anything back. So that's my whole point in saying, moving forward, I think it makes a lot of sense to have either a hundred percent solution or you come back and try again. So because that that gives us as a commission, the closure that we have not been getting for a decade.
I I don't have a, I don't really have a problem with this, except for it is a little bit more onerous on the developer in the sense that they might submit two days after one meeting. So that, let's say, you know, then they have to be scheduled for the next meeting, which is a month out. Then at that month is the first time they've now found out that they have an issue. Then they have to resubmit. Well, the window of time for them to then prepare the packet for resubmission is a limited window of time. And if they can't get whatever resolved within that ten day period after our meeting before the next submission deadline, they could be three months out. And
So and and that's exactly, that's that's exactly the kind of thinking that got us to where we are now, where we approve things that we ought not be approving.
So let's say, one of the other conditions is for that one is that the, you know, the township's legal advisor, which is the prosecutor, had to review the HOA documents pertaining to the private street. So we're going to make them take a one month continuance of the final site plan so that we can get that confirmation from legal before they can sign off.
Absolutely.
Well, isn't it the responsibility, their responsibility to know what the rules are? And realize if you don't do this, here's what's going to happen.
But there is no rule that states that has to be done.
No, but there
But it can be part of the, you know, on the first of the year, we sit down, here's how we're going to do all these things. You know, the procedure, if it's the procedure here, it's simple, you know.
If if the HOA documents need to be reviewed by the prosecutor, and if they find something that's egregious and we approved it?
Well, we we approve it condition upon prosecutor approval. If the prosecutor has an issue and can't approve of those documents, that's a different thing. We're approve it on the on the condition that the prosecutor approves of the language. Right? And so all that that is is a quick check. And it's an easy verification that the condition has been met.
It would, it would also be just as easy for them to get those HOA documents to us well before the site plan review. And then, all right, hey, we're going to submit these to the to the prosecutor, have them reviewed, see if there's any issues. So that when we come to the site plan review, as soon as it's done, it's done.
As long as they know that that needs to be done because they weren't sent to the prosecutor before we put that condition on it. So how would they even gotten to the prosecutor's office?
Should we not, should we not treat all HOA documents the same?
No, most HOA, you know, we'll talk about HOA documents today, but the only HOA documents, the only things that we're reviewing for an HOA document is common areas related to the cul-de-sac and common areas related to a private street. There's nothing else on those HOA documents that gets reviewed for a township issue.
And but
And for conservation, there would be
But we shouldn't send that to, even even though it's just, all right, just the common areas, we shouldn't send that off to prosecutor to get reviewed?
You don't think that the documents should be very clear if it's a private street that they have an obligation?
Because, no, 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 I do. That's why I wanted them to get reviewed by the prosecutor is because I thought that we need to make sure that that was an ironclad document that said that those, that's a private street. But what I'm saying is that that document was not forged prosecutor before we put that condition on there. So moving forward next time, what's going to happen? Are are all documents being sent to the prosecutor beforehand? And that's just how it's just going to be done? Otherwise, it's unfair for an applicant to submit them twenty days in advance, us to not do anything, have a meeting and then tell them at that meeting, you need to wait another month to get your approval because we have to send them to the prosecutor.
So that changes, that that changes our process saying, hey, you know what? As soon as these HOA documents are are in the office,
Soon as they're available.
Send it to the prosecutor, make sure it's okay, so that we can sit here in our in our meeting and say, all right, prosecutor already blessed off on this. And you know what? If they send them to the prosecutor three days before the meeting and they're not back in time, see you in a month.
They can't send
So no, I understand, but I'm saying if they send them to us three days before our meeting, we send it off to the prosecutor and they don't have time to get to it, then you're going to have to wait a month.
Well, we should probably update the process so that it's known how how much in advance to send us the materials and for HOA documents so that has been time to prosecutor review so that it's not, you know, a secret when they come in here.
And we can also, that that could actually just be something that we add into the preliminary site plan review.
Right.
As as a notification, hey, as soon as your HOA documents are available, send them to the zoning office so that we can get them reviewed by the prosecutor before your final site plan review.
Like you said, that's just common spaces that have to do with cul-de-sacs and
Or the road or
Yeah, so it's not that much, right?
Generally speaking, yeah. But I mean, it also, it also deals with any sort of facilities, like originally the clubhouse at Skyland was going to be, was going to be utilized, I think that ended up
Party center or something, and
So if there are any sort of shared facilities, I actually, I think it might even include any sort of the in the conservation development, it would also, you did say
Esmond's.
Yep. Would there be, I mean, does does anybody have heartburn with that kind of being our standard operating procedure moving forward? Of, all right, we want a hundred percent solution so that something like this doesn't come up yet?
As long as they're reviewed well by the zoning inspector in advance, I think that that's fair. I just don't think, you know, I I don't want them to get into a situation where it's because of something that we missed and 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 so, you know, we're creating an additional burden on And so, you know, we're creating an additional burden on applicant unfairly.
I I I agree with that, but I think I I also look at it as. When when you're gonna have six, seven eyes looking at something, you're more likely to catch stuff.
That's that's why I wanted that one to come.
The occasional thing will fall through. And if it does. We gotta extend some grace to one another. I mean. I'm told often I'm not perfect. So. Um, you know, some sometimes these things happen and we we can apologize to the applicant and say, alright. You know, somehow we all missed this. But we need it. I don't see that happening often. Because. I mean, Marcus, you're great at running through these preliminary plans and looking at them and finding all the holes.
But I had flagged that one a month and a half before. To you and Inspector Wilson. And to all three championship trustees.
Okay, if we can't, we just make the zoning department make it clear that, you know, everything must be presented at the same time. Period, end of story. If it's not, it'll be rejected.
Um, kinda sorta. Except it goes to Marcus's point about HOA documents being reviewed by the prosecutor.
Well, but it comes here first.
Yes.
Okay.
So have 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 it come to us first.
Any thing the zoning inspector, cause it gets off her off her desk right away. Cause you know, she doesn't have to be bothered with it, doing anything with it. She's just moving that on. But same thing as a. Why we can't ask somebody to submit everything at the same time? If you don't, there may be delays, period.
Yep.
I just, I I think we're complicating.
We honestly, we may be able to just take the, and again, this ties in very well with the new business. We might wanna move the HOA documents from being. A final site plan to preliminary site plan.
I that 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 would take care of that right there, if we can, could.
If they're written, are they written then? I didn't think so. I just remembered.
That's one of the very last documents.
Yeah, they usually don't write them until after they've got the development.
Set.
So. That.
I think that's the tradition. You're talking, those are traditions probably been followed through. That's the way they've done.
Yeah, I don't know.
So we've asked them to change it.
Well, that's that's how the lawyers are doing, because they wanna know the number of lots, because everything is constructed after that. Right? All the covenants and deed restrictions are a function of the lots being locked.
Okay.
So that's why preliminary is when you finally are blocking the lots, so then you start working on all the other stuff. I mean, look, I think as long as they know, you know, again, the tenth of the month, I think is the submission deadline in order to meet to for our next meeting. And so as long as they know that that HOA document has to be submitted as part of the final site plan, and we're not accepting the final site plan until. Uh, the HOA documents are as part of that application packet, pretty simply submit by the tenth of the month. Which includes the HOA documents, and then we would still have twenty days for it to get reviewed through the the attorney. I I I think all of this is fine, as long as someone is doing an initial screening upon the. You know, when the packet is dropped off here to make sure everything is. At least reasonably, again, mistakes happen. But as long as everyone makes sure reasonably that every, that they're they're going through a checklist and they're saying, yes, everything's been met. Here we were accepting this, putting it on our schedule. Then that's very reasonable. Just as long as. No surprises at the end.
Yeah, I think ultimately, I I like being able to. Not have surprises in the meeting. Just say, hey, you know, we're gonna go through our, you know, A through L and. You know, as long as you've you've met every single thing. We're applicable. Then. We're good to go.
So then I suggest we add that language to the preliminary. That would be a text amendment.
Well, I, so and I guess that's that is something that has to be in.
Which part, what, what part?
I'm not sure. Or could it be on the preliminary site plan application?
That's where I'd put it.
What?
But what?
That you have to have.
Everything has to be submitted at the same time.
I think that that's already probably on the, I don't know, maybe it's not, but yeah, that seems like form.
Yeah, I think I think it's something where we say, and and. Your HOA documents need to be one hundred percent complete. Before final site plan submission. And then we still have twenty to twenty some, twenty seven days, twenty eight days. To have that reviewed by the prosecutor, because as soon as it's submitted. They should be set off.
And then final can mean final.
Final should be final. Yes, you're good.
I'm in favor of.
I think we'll just see how it how it goes. I mean, because, you know, I think more often than not, if I recall, almost every final site plan has some condition. That's been attached to it. And so, you know, we'll see how this works the first few times and and. Go like, go forward.
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's one of those things that. It's we're we're changing an existing process, so it may not be perfect the first time, but we can keep refining it. And get where we need to be.
And as time goes on, everyone learns that this is the new process.
Yeah. Um, now to build off of that, um, what we're supposed to be doing today in the new business is site plan requirements, HOA documents. Looking at um. Alright, what is missing? From our submission requirements? Or what is extraneous in the submission requirements? Does anyone have? Kind of any feedback? I know, Marcus, you had a few of, hey, we should include this.
Yeah.
Um. Does anybody else have anything that they're looking at? And I'm sorry, not to gloss over, we'll we'll certainly get to you. Did anybody else have some um, ideas of, hey, this is something else I would like to see? Um, before looking at a preliminary or final site review? And well, Marcus, why don't you share the ones that you'd come up with and.
Sure.
So we generate discussion.
We require ten sets of um. Application, including plans and the application fee. I just think we should have a digital copy of the plans. It makes it easy. So if we wanna broadcast it up here, we can. It also makes it easy for file retention, so they have a digital copy. Uh, so hopefully, if we move forward, we don't need to retain all this paper. So I think a digital copy of the plans would be a good thing to include for both final and preliminary site plan.
So you, are you recommending digital in place of the ten?
No.
In addition to.
Right, because we'll still each, the ten, ten provides each one of us a copy. And for now, we certainly want a copy for the office, because I know that, uh. You know, if someone comes in and requests to see a file.
It's open to the public.
Right, they wanna come in and be handed the whole file. Here you go, sit here and look at it. So. I'm not trying to replace the paper at this point. I'm just trying to allow us to have the digital, especially so that those large. Documents can then hopefully.
Yeah.
Start.
Well, plus it allows, I mean, like I I had. I printed this out today and. It's really useful.
Right.
Eleven, that's much better.
So that was my first one. The second one is going back to Prairie Vista. I think one of our challenges is that we really don't specify. That we require certain lines to be, or measurements to be shown on those plans. Uh, the side yard width, the rear yard depth. Uh, the lot width at road right of way or for a private street, uh, the pavement, uh, the lot width at the building line and the lot area. And so I think that we talk a lot about the building, you know, mentions of all buildings and building spaces and setbacks. I think we should just include another line item for those things that then makes it easy for us to see the numbers and then verify that it's it's been met. And then the third one is uh, on page one nineteen of our code. Uh, we do have that the following items are required for conservation developments in addition to the items normally required for a final site plan. Item two is a draft of the owners association, including the covenants, um, grants of easements or other restrictions. Uh, I think that that's primarily, again, because of the conservation easement requirements. Um, but I do think that we should require a similar set of owner's documents for um. For it, we can save for any subdivision, um, or again, we can limit it to a subdivision where there's some sort of common area. Um, that's commonly owned by the HOA and leave it at that. Either one of those are okay. Um, but really our purview is. Uh, subdivision that has some common legal property. So those were the three that I had.
One of the things that um. I I question whether or not we're getting. Is um, on one nineteen D. The proposed landscaping, all that stuff, but.
What did you say, one nineteen?
Uh, page one nineteen, I'm sorry. Um, letter, letter B, it's talking about um, any existing trees to be removed. Um. If you're looking at the preliminary site plan, we're talking about any uh, you you need to identify any um. Any trees with a twelve inch diameter. Which. I don't think we've. In my entire time on the commission, I don't know that we've had. A plan with. Twelve inch diameter trees marked. And the reality is. It's not that big a tree. I I I literally went out into my backyard and I I probably got like. Eight within twenty feet of my my back porch.
This is one of those things that, you know, I I think that that item sounds great and, you know, maybe we can try to persuade them, you know, there's a large pocket of trees right here. Can you carve around with the road to try to avoid that set of trees, which you see on an aerial? So I always big figure. Look, I can see an aerial, I can see where trees are, and so we'll we'll meet that, we'll we'll say that that element is satisfied based upon that aerial. But those requirements, I'm kind of wondering if if they wanna destroy every one of their trees. They can do that before they submit the final or preliminary site plan technically. Um, the and certainly the building, you know, the every lot owner can do it after the fact. And so. That's one of those ones that I'm always like, why is this even really here, other than for us to try to persuade them to move?
And and I I love preserving as much vegetation as we can. Um, but. Right now, we are not getting. One of the requirements. It's 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 not happening. Yeah, I mean, think about it. A twelve inch diameter is this and this. That's a forty fifty year old tree. It's it's not. A substantial tree. And and I I think honestly, the way we define it is actually very difficult, because what happens when you have. A tree with multiple trunks? Is it the aggregate of those trunks? Is it just around the entire? Where do we measure? Do we measure it six feet? Do we measure it three feet? Cause there can be a substantial difference. I think, but I I don't wanna completely remove it.
That that line doesn't say that they have to identify each tree. What they say is each set of applications should contain existing major vegetation features, wooded areas and isolated. Uh, large isolated trees, one foot or more in diameter. If they show us an aerial view. They meet that, because they're showing us the vegetation. They're showing us in fact all vegetation, including trees under. Eight, eight, twelve feet, twelve.
That's.
That that is a stretch. No. Why? It's showing us the existing major vegetation features.
It's showing you everything and you can't see the the forest through the trees, so to speak, where, alright.
But it doesn't say we have to identify each tree.
It says we need to identify.
No, it just.
Isolated trees, one foot or more in di- in diameter.
Wooded areas and large.
Wooded areas. And so you need to identify. Vegetation. And that's not something we're getting. First, I don't, I think, uh, one foot or more in diameter is. Much too small of a of a tree that you need to identify. And. What's what is, what's your your holdup on that? You're you're saying that. An an aerial picture is more than enough.
It shows you all the areas of vegetation. It shows you. All, it shows you where every tree canopy is, it shows you the areas of vegetation versus the area of farm. That's to me is what that's trying to get at, is identifying what areas are vacant barren land? And what areas are pockets of vegetation that we would like to preserve.
And can you tell? From those aerial photographs, which ones are a foot larger in diameter or not?
No, but it will show every.
Okay, but that doesn't allow you to. Truly identify, alright, these are the trees that we should be trying to save. Versus the scrub brush that you can basically take down with brush hog. I can see on an aerial view, it's a five foot brush and what's this thirty foot tree?
When it's isolated, right? You can tell when it's when it's isolated is what you're saying.
Well, I think when they gave us aerial photos of even the farm, one three oh three. They gave us the aerial photos, we could kind of tell where the vegetation was. Where the various areas. And I think that's maybe. What is reference to D.
Okay, and and.
Showing just where. Where the vegetation or tho- those other resources are. Where the waterways are. I think that's the.
I I could very well be mis- misinterpreting it. I feel like the the fact that they, the the original verbiage sets apart. Um. Trees, one foot or more in diameter. I feel like that's, alright, we wanna preserve those. And. I don't think a one foot in diameter tree is all that uncommon. It's it's not like it's a three hundred year old tree that, alright, we definitely wanna preserve this, try and do all of your construction around it. We can't. Force you to, but we'd like you to. I would rather have them identify large trees that we can say, art now, we can, we can directly ask a question. Are you planning on leaving that large, large tree that's, you know. Three and a half feet wide? At at the trunk?
So they're going to, a person's, for every site plan, person's going to have to walk. The fields. And identify any trees and then correlate those to the location on the map. And provide us a specific identification of each of those trees.
And that's why I feel that. One foot diameter is too onerous. But when you go to a two, two and a half, three foot diameter. There aren't that many in any field. That. In an aerial view, you probably could figure out, alright, this is a pretty close to a three foot diameter tree, let's go check it out. And then that would be something that you look at and say, okay. This one's huge, this one's huge, and this one's huge. The other ones. We can. Move them as necessary.
I had a woodland management plant on on my, on my. Alright, it's eleven acres of walled woods. He didn't even walk the entire section of woods. He identifies the pockets of woods. Because a lot of that, it's not where you're going to continuously walk it. And that's eleven acres. And you're talking about subdivisions that are a hundred to a hundred and fifty acres? And you want them to walk them? To identify any tree? That's three foot or more?
If they're isolated.
But are you just wanting the isolated ones? Or are you wanting?
Yeah, no, 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 because because the, yes, specifically the isolated ones. Thanks, thanks for calling that out, Mr. Kev. Because. In the dense vegetation. That is very, very readily apparent in those overhead views. Cause it's dense. There there are a ton of trees there and that's already identified. But if you have an isolated tree. That. There's one massive tree and like two or three around it, let's. Look at that massive tree, is it worth saving? Is it a large enough tree that we wanna ask them to please not cut that tree down? Is it something we can ask?
And what if they say no? I mean, I kept the trees up in my development. I kept all of my trees in my. I mean, I kept the trees up in my development, I kept all of my trees in my, when I did it. But I can, I can tell you this, I don't know how many houses is in that development today, but the majority of them. Cleared everything in front.
And it's actually not the lot, because again, once the lot is. Only the developer that we would have any say, and I'm still not sure. Where in our code do we even have any authority to do anything that that would make us want to have this?
So then, I mean, it's it's, then then you're leaning more towards, all right, let's just remove this particular requirement.
No, I like having the requirement of identifying vegetation. I like to see that aerial, I like to see. Where the road is going relative to that, so we can have that discussion of, you know, that this, this looks like an interesting area. Whether we look at every tree and try to fight for a single tree. I just don't know that that's something that we really we have.
Right, I don't, I don't know that um. Too many developers are gonna want to take down massive trees. Uh, because it's, it's it's a very picturesque.
If it's the middle of the road, they're taking out, it's off the middle of the tree. And if it's not where they have to put the road, they're gonna minimize their tree cobbages, they can't, because it's expensive.
So I think as of today, most of the developers just send a aerial topography. And that covers that line item, is that correct? Isn't that what you think?
So I've always looked at it.
So are we asking them to do a step further then? Is that what you're asking in addition to the aerial topography?
I'm not asking that that we're, we have them go out and. All right, it's one foot, circle it, submit it. I'm asking how everyone else is reading this. And I've always read it as, all right, we need to know where the one foot trees are. And that seems really. It it basically just completely ignored to this point. The way that I've always read it. If everyone else is looking at it as, all right, an aerial view is is fine. I'm okay with that. I do think for. An isolated tree. That is, and and again, I don't think one foot is big enough. I think we would need to expand that diameter. If it's actually interesting enough that it's isolated and. We want to call it out. Is there a diameter on a tree that we'd say, all right, let's call this out as something that we want to look at? Or is it just, all right, it's their property, they can do what they want?
Wha- why are you focused on? Let's say it's two foot, two foot isolated trees, right? In in a dense vegetation area, there could be a two foot. Tree of value, and there could be many smaller trees. But you're not requiring or wanting a delineation of the two foot tree within that denser area. But you want it within the isolate area, and I'm not sure I understand that. It seems like to me.
Because a denser area. To to your point, you 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 said that, you know, if we see this nice pocket of vegetation, we might ask them to. All right, is there anywhere we can get the road to go around it? Well. If there's a two foot tree in there and we get them to go around that piece of that that dense vegetation, then. It doesn't matter if there's a two foot tree in there, if they're all. Eight inch trees. We saved all of them.
But a two foot diameter tree, we're going to see that on satellite, even if it's just a single tree, we'll see that on satellite. I can see every one of my little maple trees that are less than twelve inches in diameter. On a satellite image, individually staked out in my yard. So. I I don't know why we need a special delineation on a map. For those trees, because we'll see.
So more, more than anything, you're just saying. The verbiage of this is not of any consequences, just give us an aerial view. Give us, get it, give us a slat- satellite view of the area that you're you're proposing to work on.
Right, I think that that would inherently show us those trees. That's how I would interpret that.
The the trees that I think about, like redwood over there, there was a handful of the ones that they kept. Right there on three oh three. And until I think the one, we lost a good portion of one of them in the storm. Uh, recently or whatever, but that's what I picture. You know, wanting to keep. I don't know how many they had to remove around there, but I believe that's probably what you're talking about.
Um, more or less, and and really what I'm. Do they need to be? To to Marcus's point, do they need to be specifically called out on a satellite photo? These are the trees that are. Two hundred and fifty years old. And if we're just gonna look at it and say, no, because frankly. It's your land, you wanted, you do what you want, if you want to. Cut it all down and and sell it. They they can, we can stop them from doing it, but we can certainly ask them, hey. Do you, do you plan on leaving these larger trees? And again, doesn't matter the size, probably not. We can, we can just ask, hey, are you planning on leaving these old trees? And if they say no. Hopefully you can work it into your plans that you do, because they're the beautiful trees.
If we're talking about a conservation development, isn't it kind of in the name?
A conservation development is a little bit different. I think the trees you're talking about are red, on redwood are actually in the conservation.
I I would agree.
Conservation area, and so those they wouldn't have touched anyway, because they're in the preserved conservation land. So what we would be talking about is if they're in the road, where they're going to construct a road. For instance, so if there's a large tree that's in, where they want to cut the road in. Do we ask them, hey, can you cut, can you move the road shifted five feet to avoid cutting down this tree?
Driveway as well, or just the road?
Just the road, because when the driveways go in. That that's done on the individual lot basis, and they can clear cut. Their each lot if they want to, that's not part of the site plan. The site plan is really looking at the development as the whole, which would be any of the. You know, the road construction or. Ponds or things like that.
Sure.
That's what we would see and and ask them.
And 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 truthfully, if the developer wanted to clear cut before they even came in, they can.
And that's what happened with uh the the apartment, the the unseen housing, they clear cut it beforehand, and that's quite common as well.
So and I I guess that was the, it's, this has been a long. Meandering path, but I brought it up as, all right, is this something that? We need to keep. It sounds like the overwhelming. Majority is saying, yeah, keep it, but. Keep it the way we've been doing it, don't. Have them call out larger vegetation, we can do that on our own. Is that pretty much what everyone's saying about that one?
I I like the language, I don't even focus on the one foot, so I would be happy if that was removed. I don't think I focus on that, I just look at the overall.
Are there, are there any other that we have on the list that anyone's like, hey, this is kind of extraneous?
One of the, one of the things that has has kind of struck me, and again, you can, you guys. Because we're not going to modify this language, I think this is just a brainstorm we'll talk about next time. Is both for preliminary and final site plan, we have special requirements who are conservation developments. And some of those, I'm not sure I understand why they're there for conservation developments. For instance. You know, for, we're requiring the area of structures of known historical significance such as old barns or heritage trees. Why are we requiring that for conservation developments but not other developments? I I've just never understood. Why that's unique, uniquely a conservation requirement, you know, is a re- conservation development requirement. So those kind of things, there, there's this list of, I'm on eleven point four M for for preliminary and J. In the final eleven point five, that I think you either. Do the same thing for all subdivisions, or you don't do it for any of them. I, there, there's a lot of them, I just don't see why we're treating.
I'm I'm speculating, because this thing was just here before. Any of us were here, I'm speculating they included it because, hey, we want to preserve as much of. Inkly as we can, and it was never added to the other subdivisions. Um, because this uh, this verbiage came after.
And that would be my guess, when you see a lot of the.
David.
That's exactly right, after we lost the lawsuit up here, because there's some beautiful scenery and stuff up there. But zoning, when did, all, so a lot of this was done then, that's exactly right.
Right, and that's why I'm saying, if we're looking at this, let's revisit that and say.
Yep.
Does that make sense? And if so, why is it only for conservation and not for all developments? Because it just doesn't seem like we need that.
It's just the reaction.
They they just put it in there because that point they were working in a conservation development.
And the, you know, the township was hot over the laws.
And and so another thing that that's also. This is a segue, it's not about the plan review. Uh, you look at the um road uh requirements in conservation developments. And they are very clearly defined, and they're not as clearly defined in. The traditional development, whereas I think we should. I I think we should migrate that language from the conservation development over there as well, but this is all gonna be.
You're talking about private street was one of them, because that was.
Actually, I'm talking about where. All right, all of, all of the homes have to be accessible from one primary road system. You, you can't access it on two totally different state routes, and there's no way to interconnect those lots. Which is something that we're ready to.
So. You know, we're talking about identifying. Known histor- or structures with known historic significance such as old barns or heritage trees. Because you do have to conserve, is that in there to? Maybe, I don't want to say coax, but. But nudge the developer into, if you're gonna conserve and there is. Uh, a historical building or a building of some significance, that maybe you might consider. Conserving this area that contains it.
And that very well could be, it's just, you know, perhaps there's a historic barn on a regular subdivision and. They might knock it down at the width of street, so if we care about making sure that we're preserving these historical features first. Then why are we just requiring us to identify it for conservation developments? Why are we not requiring for other site plans as well, so at least we can identify it and say, hey. You know, your street's passing very close to this historic building, can you consider moving it?
Just because it's easier for the conservation development though, right? Possibly.
I mean, no, it's, it's, it's just that was added to the conservation development. Because conservation development language came in after. The original subdivision subdivision language.
I'm just, I I guess in my mind, I can, I can just see it as, you know, it would be easier to preserve, that's all, in in a conservation development.
Potentially. I mean, you look at what's, what the the development that's going in um. Right on the corner of Stony Hill and Mattingly. Um, and there was a, I wouldn't say it was a historic, but there was a very old farmhouse and barn there that they're no longer there. Uh, because that's basically where the road is.
That that, you know, it could be problematic thing, but let's say that there's a nice barn on a, in a conservation development. We carve around that and we make it part of the conservation, right? Well, the HOA becomes liable for that structure. And then over time, that structure's gonna deteriorate, and that structure's gonna have to be removed by the HOA. Um, because it's a liability to. Conservation developments, we really don't want them to be utilizing that area for as part of. Because it's supposed to be maintained in its undisturbed natural state, so there's a lot of considerations there. That's why I'm, you know, it it sounds great, but I think there's a reactionary thing to to what was happening and. Just look at whether it makes sense to keep it just in conservation, to move it outside conservation to all developments, or to remove it, it's just consideration.
And honestly, that's the majority of what this meeting is like, all right, hey. Marcus, you brought up some great ideas of the digital, digital copies, what and what were the other two? The um. The side yard.
In the residential district, some of the HOA documents.
And this is just for everyone to kind of chew on it for the, for the next month. Until we meet together and say, all right, yes. I think we should put in language that includes this, something along this line, and and kind of ferment it. Think about, all right, how how would we word this? Um, the HOA documents. Of, all right. They need to be submitted. With the entire final submission packet. And a- again, I think that goes to us putting it on the form and clearly. Articulating that to the developer when they're, when when they're going through the process, it's gonna be an education piece. But then you also have, all right, well, how do we tell them we want to see the setbacks delineated on the, on the plan? You know, and just figure out what the, what the word verbiage of that looks like.
Well, we could simply have cha- checklist, you know, most of the developers come there and talk up. Kind of off the record about, here's what I'd like to do and. You know, maybe that's the point where the zoning inspector, who usually is the first person. Just point out to them, they have all these things you're gonna have to do.
And and I.
And they do some of that.
That's, that's, that's an important um distinction, what you just said there. A a lot of times people will come in and, like you said, talk a little bit. Off the record, like, this is what I want to do. And the zoning inspector can tell you what the regulations say. The zoning inspector cannot tell you, well, you should do this. Or you should do that. Really, the only thing the zoning inspector can tell you is exactly what's in the book. And not tell you how to make your project work within that. Because heaven forbid the zoning inspector does something wrong, there may be some legal liability associated with that. When they come up with a plan that doesn't meet, that doesn't pass inspection. So really, all the zoning inspector can do is show you, are these, this is where you're gonna find these. The rules and regulations that are, that are going to apply to the project, look, you're looking to put in. I think there's been a little bit of confusion about that.
Well, I think it's generally from the public, they.
Yeah, oh yeah, that's, that's what I mean. So is there, I mean, does anybody else have anything else they'd like to recommend that we add for this before we uh? Start wrapping things up? If not, um. Obviously, uh, zoning inspector Blanc is not here today, she had a uh. A doctor's appointment, actually, so she wasn't able to make it. And there's not much on my side, I did receive a couple of emails. Um, kind of going off of um what we were just talking about here with with they. Where um, a couple of folks wanted to know, hey, you know, we have frontage on. Our subdivision and on this primary road, and we're being told this is all front yard and. It is. And they have a very small backyard, just had questions about that kind of stuff and kind of explaining. The the majority of questions that are coming to me, I'm sending along to. The zoning inspector for her to actually answer, because. Unless it is commission related. It's more in her purview as well as the zoning office. So that's what I've been dealing with. Anything from Michelle?
I have nothing.
Marcus?
Just two quick things, going back to, you know. The, we had a discussion last time about that B three district, and I think the, when I said, and hopefully the zoning. Commission understood, but I just want to clarify. That my feeling is that if there's uh something that's been happening long term and the government, the township, we're trying to. Come in and tell them that they had to do something different, the route to address that is through a variance. And that was, that's why I was also referencing an egg building, if there's someone got an egg building, it's been there for twenty years. And they're no longer using it as egg, and the township comes in and says that doesn't meet zoning code. It's not that I'm trying to say that they need to tear it down, it's what I'm saying is, if the township were to come in and say, you need to tear that down. I would seek a variance to adjust that, so that was, there's always a process by which, you know. Do a change.
To resolve some sort of problem.
Something to be resolved. The other note is that I spoke to Rob Henwood, because I was trying to get a certificate for myself. But I did ask him about whether it's common for, I said, it's not unusual to have districts district lines, district map lines that don't follow the parcel lines, because we had a discussion about how common that is. And he actually said, no, it's actually quite common to see that. And he referenced, you know, a district map might extend two hundred feet into the parcel. That's that, so it does appear to be quite common, at least from Rob Henwood, and not something that's unique to Hinkley. So those were just the two items that I just kind of wanted to close the loop on. Mr. Man.
No, I have nothing. Mark, Mark Steron would like to address the group when we get.
Okay.
I'm good.
Trustee Engle, no? Alright, and any public comment, if you wanna, wouldn't mind coming up and introduce yourself, name, address, all that stuff.
Do I have to?
Yes, sir, if you wanna talk.
I knew I was gonna be on tape, but you got my hair done.
Well, you look good.
It's only the back of your head, isn't it?
Yeah, well, that's the most.
So, my name is Mark Steron. My home address is one six four zero State Road. Business address is one three five three Ridge Road. And I am basically here as for the chamber. Okay, so I am also president of the Hinkley Chamber. We have been going round and round, trying to, if I could. Trying to get a basic program in that all of the other townships and cities around us already have. Okay, honoring our veterans, okay. I understand there's an awful lot of uproar over this. So I didn't even tell anybody I was coming tonight. You don't need that. Okay, I have no cards in this game. There's no reason for me to really sit here and push. I am not a veteran. Okay, the reason why I think this should be done is because it's the right thing to do. Okay, this has to be put to rest already. Okay, I looked over your zoning regulations six times, gave them to five different people. Depending whoever you give them to is how they interpret these zoning regulations. Section ten point four, number C. It says all signs erected and maintained pursuant to any township function. Okay, now, if you guys don't realize the reason the chamber was put together over sixty years ago, it was to help with the township and do some of the things that the township trustees could not do. Okay, this is one of the things that they can't do. Okay, because they cannot collect money for the signs, they cannot fund that. The chamber is willing to step up, put that all on their back, fund all of the brackets. Okay, and organize this for the township. There is not one person that I have talked to that has been against this. Okay, and that's even including the trustees. Okay, so if you look down there, township function. Number one, Memorial Day. Okay, this goes hand in hand with Memorial Day, as far as that. After these flags are up there, at the end of their time, they come down and during Memorial Day, there will be a ceremony so we can honor those veterans. I cannot put up whatever I want. Okay, it's very straightforward by the utility company. Okay, that they could only be hero signs. Okay, it can't be come to S and S, no matter how much I want you to come and visit me. Okay. As far as that, as far as wind loading everything, there's been studies done, all of that goes through the utility company. So look, this just starts here. If you guys said, hey, let's go ahead and do this, it's a good idea. I still have to jump through hoops with the utility company. There's like a twenty page file that I have to do. And if we break their code, okay, it's a one-year process for a one-year application. We won't get it again. Okay, it's very simple, you know, you look down to it, things shouldn't be so hard. This is a very simple thing, you know, you go over to Bath Township, they have it. You see the pictures there from Independence, North Royalton, Broadview Heights, Brexville. Okay, and I could name another twelve other areas. There's no reason why these people can't honor their own military heroes. You know, but like I say, it's up to your determination how you're gonna read the code. You know, hopefully you take some of this into account and say, hey, look, this is the right thing. I know this has been bad, going back and forth in the township now for years.
So I I hate to be the one to tell you this. I agree with you, I love it. But this would be something that would be taken up with the BZA?
Yes, you have to fail me first.
Well, so, here's here's my problem, if I could. The BZA could give gives course exemptions, but there has to be some reasons for it, okay? I don't know that they, that this would actually qualify under a BZA positive vote, because you're changing zoning.
You're, I I don't know.
You're changing zoning.
I don't think you're changing zoning. I thi- I think you're you're granting or denying a variance to existing zoning. You are not changing.
Yeah, but if you go through a series of questions, usually you think of the Duncan factors, which you're familiar with as it relates to property, but it also could relate to this. And it, you know, and it would suggest you get to the end of it that, yeah, we maybe we should do this. But I was always a strong believer over there. That, you know, that that there was some thing that you had no control over that happened or could happen. And that's why you had to get a variance for something like this.
I I think that it's also very unusual for the BZA for for two other reasons. One is normally when there's a variance or a conditional use, the landowner signs off and the variance comes from the parcel. So here, you'd have like forty-five different parcels or however many different utility poles you wanted to put this on.
In the right of way.
That would have.
In the right of way.
But it's still on that parcel. So you'd have to get variances for thirty or forty different parcels. My other concern is that, you know. So what, wait a minute, before we move on from that, why would that be a bad thing?
Wouldn't it be easier, first of all, the.
Let me finish my second one, because this is another challenging one, is a variance in anything else cannot be based upon the content of the sign. So if they grant a variance for a banner because it's a military purpose and another person applies for a similar variance, but it's for a very different purpose, perhaps a far more controversial one. And the only difference is the content of the language, not the size of the sign or anything else about the sign. They go through the variance process that the BZA has no legal rationale for denying one variance on banners, but not the next variance.
Yes, but you you guys wouldn't be going through that because it is very straightforward what the utility company allows. This is not what the what the township is going to say. The utility company will not allow us to do anything but hometown hero flags. Where do you think they got them over all all of the other towns?
I love the idea. I'm just saying why, the two reasons that I don't think.
But that but that shouldn't be holding you back from saying yes on this.
We, the other issue is. Authority to say yes. Well, the other issue is. BZA that has the authority to say yes, whether you agree with with the the way it's worded or not. We cannot just say, eh, it's a banner we like, let's throw it on in the right of way. You know that. This is a BZA topic that needs to be addressed by the BZA and the BZA should be the ones that say, you know what, yes, we're either gonna allow it or we're not gonna allow it. I don't think that this is a, why, what is the variance? What is? The variance is allowing you in the public right of way, a banner or a flag, but.
So what what do you constitute as the public right of way? Because I measured the closest pole to the street and we're talking seventeen feet from the edge line. We're not talking right up on something. So what do you consider the right of way?
The poles are.
Okay, so we're talking on some of those poles, we're thirty-five feet in.
Because the roads have been moved over the years.
Right.
My other question is, he brought up ten point four, which is an exemption from the zoning resolution. But we as a zoning commission don't interpret this code. We write the code, but we don't interpret the code. So the person who has to interpret whether a third-party organization is allowed to perform a township function and qualify under exemption is the prosecutor's office. So if you wanna attempt to qualify for an exemption from from our code, that should go to the prosecutor to determine whether the third-party organization can can get a sign exemption. I don't know, I don't, I don't think it goes to the prosecutor. That, who else interprets our code? Our legal.
Our BZA.
No, our BZA.
Absolutely, they do.
Not if it's an exemption. The BZA would not look into.
They're not asking for a variance or a condition, they're asking for an exemption.
Exemption, not a variance, that's different. On, if if it did not qualify under the township function exemption, then their only option, as it is, would be a variance. But if they qualify as an exemption, they're not getting a variance from our code. They're getting, they're they're just following our code. And it would much likely be easier to get a, an exemption, or not, not a variance through the BZA than an exemption as a third party. You're granting a variance on banners regardless of the speech for a variance. You're you're granting a variance on banners to be posted on the utility poles. Which the utility company will flat out tell you, oh, you wanna put up an advertisement? No. You wanna put up a political sign? No. You wanna put up a have a great day sign? No. You can put up a flag, you can put up hometown hero, that is it.
Okay, so.
So they're getting, first of all, they're seeking thirty variances. So it's thirty times times five hundred, is that the variance cost? I'm sorry. You know what, I don't know how that that process would work. Because I'm not on the BZA. I don't know what the legal requirement would be for actually paying those variances. I don't know if it's one, I don't know if it can be weighted. We don't have those answers, but the BZA does. And the BZA ultimately is gonna be the one that says, yes, we can give you this variance to put it on these utility poles if the utility company allows it. If the utility company says no, sorry about your luck. They won't say no because it's a hometown hero banner. But the correct avenue is to go through the BZA. Not if it's a township function. But it is not a township function. Why? He's saying it is. Why is it not a township function?
Why is it not a township?
Everything the Chamber of Commerce does is a township function.
No, I didn't say that.
But that's. Okay, then then you you cannot occasionally be a township function, occasionally not. Is the Historic Society a township function?
No.
It is a private organization. Period, full stop.
Agreed, I agree with that, that's not, that's not.
So it is not a township function. It may partner really, really closely and do great things for the community, which both of them do.
Well, the only township function are the flags that are up, because they would fall under this too.
Yes.
Okay, that's the only part, and that's not what we're here talking about, talking about the hometown hero banners.
Yes. Now, ultimately, if 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 it were a township, if if the if the Chamber of Commerce were a township organization, the entire executive board would be voted on by the general public. It isn't. It is voted on by members that pay to be in that organization. Therefore, it cannot be a township function. I don't know about that. I'm telling you, it cannot be. Why? Because I've received clarification on this. Okay, so then we shouldn't even be talking about ten point four. Yes, which is why I said it belongs at the BZA. Not with us. And that is the, I love it, let's do it. Go to the BZA and they are gonna be the ones that are gonna tell you, alright, these are the next steps.
So what you gotta do is write down why you're turning me down so I could take it to the BZA.
We're not turning, okay.
Yes, you are.
It wouldn't, it doesn't come from here, Mark. It has to either come from her or from over there.
Right. So that's what I need is to take it to the BZA.
Can I ask you another question?
Yes, sir, go ahead, please.
You you said that the township can't do it because they don't have the money, I guess, for this. My question is, why can't the town, why can't you give a donation of time and money to the township and then it does become a township operation? When, I think when you look at Broadview, when you look at Parma, it's done through the cities. And so why can't this be done through the city? Because if it's done through the township, the governmental entity, it would be
An exemption.
An exemption.
So what I was told is that they cannot collect money and distribute money in the township. That's the reason why they couldn't take this on. That's what I was.
Fire department, fire department, I have, part of the government.
We took a hundred thousand dollar donation.
That that's what I was told.
Right. So to me, it's.
There's three different places, two, two hundred thousand dollars worth of stuff floating around the township.
And that's why I don't understand, you know, I I think that this is great and I think that this is the easiest way to do it is for the for the township to accept a donation of time and money and then it becomes a township, then it becomes under the purview of the township and then put up the banners. And then we don't have to worry about any of the zoning regulations, we don't have to worry about variances across thirty different parcels, any of them.
Just say, please, I wanna clarify something. Donations to the police department and fire department are not to the township departments, they are made to their respective associations.
But what about the donation, what about this out here? Thousand dollar donation.
To the beauty fund, the beautification fund that Martha manages, managed.
I'm not certain I know what you're talking about.
Well, people leave money in their in their wills that we end up with too, and it goes to the township. The township has received money, third-party money.
Ray, you mentioned the police and fire and I'm just clarifying that those donations went to their respective associations.
Well, Ray received a direct one hundred thousand dollar donation.
I was there when the check was handed to him, yes.
And that was directly deposited into the township's funds.
I can't speak to that, I'm not aware of what you're discussing. I, you know, I'm just answering or clarifying what was said.
Alright, you're correct.
What are you talking about? Obviously, that wasn't me, it was Ray that you're talking about, so.
So, so Cindy, can you clarify, though, that whether or not the chamber can donate money to the township?
You know what, I I'm not gonna comment on that. The board made a decision last year to turn this over to the chamber to run. So, that's where it's at.
Do you wanna say that on the speaker so we have it on tape or?
It's on tape.
I'm just saying.
You're well aware of it.
Again, I think that this is a fantastic cause. I just don't know how we have any of them do anything with that. It's just not something, the only thing that we do.
See, this is what I hear from everybody, it's a fantastic cause, pass it on to them. Okay, that's what I hear. I just wanna get it done. Okay, that's what I do. I finish them. Buzzard day, finish it. Golf outing, finish it. Christmas, finish it. Halloween, finish it.
So under.
I wanna finish this and bury it.
How how would you want us to finish it, I guess? Let me ask you that.
Well, I'm just saying, if you're saying that the best and easiest way is for us to. Well, I'm just saying, if you're saying that the best and easiest way is for us to donate to the township. That's what we would do.
We don't know if that is accurate.
Well, I guess you could ask Martha and find out if that's a positive.
But if we do that, it's done.
I'm just saying that that would waive all of the zoning issues.
Right, and I I agree with.
Streamline things, because if you go through the zoning, the only option, it sounds like, if it's been determined that it's not a township function is through the BZA. And I think that you pose real challenges at the BZA, which is why to me, and I would look at what those other cities are doing, but I think that most of them are being run through the cities.
And they are.
And their city, their home role.
Right, but they're.
Yeah, well, there are townships.
Not through the.
Right.
Outside organizations, and I think part of that is because it enables them to disregard what's happening in their zoning. And then they don't have to worry about the the being content neutral with it and and different things, so it it just streamlines it.
Right. I'm not against that.
So it seems the suggestion is go to the trustees or one of their meetings, get put on the dock and say, here's what we want to do.
Put it back in their lap.
Vote them up, vote it up or down.
Make a donation, all that they can do is reject the donation.
And it's it's not, I mean, I I I see in your. Your comments, you you feel like we're kicking the can down the road, not.
No, I don't I don't feel you are, I just feel that.
We're not trying.
No, 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 I.
Process.
No, I. I understand, but you know, I'm looking at some of this and it's boilerplate. It doesn't take in every scenario, this is not one of the scenarios. Okay, and this is where I'm saying somebody's got to make a determination. Usually when you go to a BZA, you got to be turned down by the zoning board. Okay, that would be the proper way to do it.
We never turn down anything, it's a BZA, the zoning inspector turns it down and it goes.
Like I'm saying, but look, I don't care where it goes, I just care that it gets done.
Yep.
Okay, it's the right thing to do and if you ask everybody out there, they say the same thing. But it keeps running in circles. Okay, and it's like, look. If that's the best way to bypass this and keep all of this other. Trash from coming into it. Then let's do it. You know, and then I can go on and do something else with my time. Right?
Mark, I think the consensus is to get on the agenda.
I appreciate your time.
Sorry, we couldn't be.
No, 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 you did, you did. What I wanted you to do, you pointed me in a direction. Right?
Can't tell you it's a good direction.
Well, yeah, we don't know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark, take your ask to Martha.
What?
Take your ask to Martha, she has the most wisdom.
Yeah.
She's got the wisdom, she knows what's happened in the past.
She'll at least know the donations that have been accepted and how they've been put into place.
There's there's a lot of.
So they have one more comment?
Trustee Engle, please.
Um, I believe. I'll double check, but our fiscal officer has advised us that we just can't accept money. From an entity and then write a check to somebody else, so.
Does sound like longer. Are there any other comments from the? From the floor? No? All right, well, um, the next regular zoning commission meeting will be November seventh. At seven PM. At this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Cruz, second by Kalis, Kalis, sorry. All in favor?
Hi.
None opposed? We adjourned at. Eight thirty four.
Also, trustee Ashwell.
Was.
On.
On. Okay, trustee Ashwell attended virtually, thank you.